Okay, mic.
All right.
All right, you're live.
All right, all right. Put my call in the right spot.
Yeah, put your call in the right spot.
That's the most important thing now.
Good morning, everyone. We're gonna call our meeting to order. If you will, we'll ask you to put your phone on vibrate or turn them off. Uh, we're gonna have Supervisor Gerald Steen to, uh, lead us in prayer. And I come control, uh, Nassan to, uh, lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Father Lord, we just, uh, come to give you thanks and glory this morning, Lord, for allowing us to be here and to be able to do Madison County's work, Lord. But Father, we just thank you for the love and the kindness you show to us daily, Lord, the things we take for granted, Lord. Father, we pray for our country, Lord, our leaders that make decisions, Lord, that affect each one of us daily. Father, we ask that you give them wisdom and knowledge, Lord, to make decisions that would always be in the best interest of this, uh, country and, Lord, that be pleasing to you. But Father, we just thank you for your love and your patience you have for us, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Riley Lot, you up?
Yes, Mr. President. You should have before you the, uh, September 6th board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes, the board please approve said minutes.
Motion for approval.
Second motion.
That Gerald second matter. Call, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning.
All right. Uh, now we're moving to concerned citizens. Got one on the list here, uh, Jay Smith Jr. Are you in here?
There he comes.
Come right on in, up there to that mic, Ms. Smith.
Come on, go on in.
All right. Tell where you live and what you're here for, see can we help you in.
I live on 666 South Spring Road, Canton. And I'm representing, uh, Junkyard Speedway, which is, I'm a carer for my father. And I'm trying to get a Thursday, once a month, on Thursday night from seven to eleven. Not saying that we're going to raise every month, but that'll give me the opportunity to keep from running to the board every month if I had to have a raise. From seven to eleven, starting this month on the 22nd.
Okay. Just kinda, kinda refresh my colleague. Uh, Ms. Smith and I had a conversation last week, uh, for him running this Thursday. And, uh, I have no problem with him running this Thursday, but he didn't add one Thursday per month to it since this morning. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do it like this, uh, if my colleague goes along with it. We run, let him run, uh, this Thursday from seven to eleven. And this is in a motion run. And run one Thursday per month. That'd be for the month of May, June, July, and August. Uh, children are out of school then. Uh, so we won't be bothering the children to have to go to sleep, get ready to go to school that morning. But if anything in between, uh, and you think you're gonna need to run on Thursday, come back for the board and, and request it.
So, other word you're saying, uh, September, just say in October and I decide to have a Thursday night, just come before the board.
Yeah, yeah, come back. Co- cause you put something fast on me there. We didn't talk about this yet.
Right, right.
So, uh, we'll have to study it. Scott and I will have to study it, make sure we doing the right thing. So, I'm just gonna let you go, if you go ahead now and run this Thursday and line you up for the summer. But if anything in between, like for next, uh, next month or month before then, all of that, you have to come back and request it.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I just want to, for you to be, uh, wise that we will be closing in November, starting November, the track will be closing. For, I think, uh, our contract is for, we can use one weekend per month from November, December, and January. So, it's not like we're gonna be wide open in those, in those months and it pick back up in February.
Yep, uh, I, I do kinda remember that. You know, we've been dealing with this track for the, what, fifteen?
Twenty, twenty some year.
And, and I don't remember it all, so that's the reason I didn't wanna just give you a whole blanket.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, then that's good to know. Nah, nah, nah. Uh, I'd rather for us to do it right here.
I can live with your suggestion.
All right. So, that's my motion run.
Yes, sir.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, uh, computer went dead. Is there any other concerned citizens? You got any, uh?
No, sir.
All right, let me go to consent item. All right. Uh, entertain a motion on consent item.
Make a motion for approval for consent items.
All right, got a motion by Carl, I mean by Gerald.
I'll second it.
Second by Carl, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right. Go around to Supervisor Adam, Supervisor Trey Backs.
Call, uh, Mr. President. I, uh, got a call from Mike Monk at Central Planning and they have a vacancy on the, the executive board at Central Planning and I was, he asked me if I had somebody in mind for the position and I think we've got a great candidate here in Madison County, somebody that stays involved with the county daily. So, my recommendation for this appointment would be Phil Buffington to take over immediately.
I'll second that motion for a little further discussion, Mr. President.
All right, we got a motion by, uh, Trey, uh, second by Gerald, uh, discussion.
I, I agree with what Supervisor Baxter has said. Uh, this, uh, opening is to, uh, represent the businesses for Madison County. Is, is basically what we're pointing today. And so, um, I, I think Phil would do, uh, do excellent, uh, you know, as far as representing the businesses and, and agree that it, it would start immediately, so. But the next meeting is in December, so, you know, we have a little time to prepare. But, uh, Phil, if you, if you would, if it passes, and we're hoping it would, we'd need your address.
I got it.
As well, and, and also make sure that we contact CNPDD.
Yes, sir.
That this new, uh, appointment. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, the motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Welcome aboard, Phil. All right. All right, uh, approval of travel, board supervisor to Washington DC.
Make a motion for approval?
All right, got a motion by Gerald, second by Carl, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Move right down to our business item. We got the Honorable Circuit Judge Backfield. How you doing, Judge?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
How are y'all? Just, uh, acknowledge your colleagues out there.
Got Judge O'Neal, one of our county court judges, and Judge Arthur, one of our circuit court judges with me today. Uh, I see this two-minute limit and I'll be honest with you, that intimidated me a little bit, cause my, my, uh, speech, so to speak, might've been over two minutes, but I'm gonna cut it down as much as I can.
We, we put that in place for lawyers and engineers.
Yeah, well.
And being a judge, you have to be a lawyer.
I understand that, I understand that. Like I say, uh, we wanna thank y'all for letting us come speak today or letting me speak and, and I'm gonna defer some things to Judge O'Neal and Judge, uh, Arthur in just a second. But this is something that I think that needed to be brought to the board. It's something that we think is very important in this, uh, county and that's our courthouse. Uh, I know several of y'all have come over and looked at the courthouse over, uh, the last several years, uh, and, uh, seen the kinda shape it's in, but I wanna at least go through some things with you very briefly. There's some things that I think you probably already know. That courthouse was built in 1995. In 1995, Madison County had approximately, uh, sixty-six thousand people. In 2000, we grew to seventy-five thousand. In 2010, we went to ninety-five thousand and now, as of the 2021 census, we have approximately a hundred and ten thousand people in this county. Now, that's a great thing, there's no doubt about that. But what that means is that our dockets have grown considerably. Uh, we have more people that are coming into that courthouse on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly basis, that type of thing. And we are, quite frankly, in dire need of space. The courthouse has three courtrooms right now. One of them is large enough for a jury trial, uh, for qualification and voir dire, uh, and that's it. That's just one that can, that can handle that. Uh, now COVID has, has, uh, we're on the backside of it and thankful for that, but it is, uh, certainly has, uh, made an impact on this to where if we try a criminal case, we can have one trial at one time, which, and the reason why is because we have to use one of the courtrooms as a jury room. Uh, our jury rooms are anywhere from fifteen by fifteen to twelve by twelve and cannot hold twelve to fourteen people comfortably. They just don't wanna be in there and I, and I understand that. We're trying to accommodate them. But, um, but they were, in my, in my opinion, they were built too small, uh, in 1995 and they certainly are too small now. Uh, our clerk's office, uh, needs to be, from what Ms. Ray has told me, and I agree with her, because I've seen other clerk's offices in counties this, this size, it needs to be twice the size it is now. You know, you gotta remember, once again, this was built in 1995 and that was fine then. It, it's, it's just too small right now. Uh, we've got holding cells in the back that, at any given time, we've had over fifty inmates in those holding cells on certain days. Uh, we've worked some deals out with Sheriff Tucker to where they're transporting them at different times, so we have less people in there. Uh, but that's, that's just, that's just a fact, that's just the bottom line. And that's a safety issue. I think that that holding cell that we have right now is good for about a third of really what we, we put in there sometimes. You know this, additionally, we have the DA's office in there now. Uh, they've been flooded out of their space and I know y'all have been working on that and we appreciate that, but, uh, they are up on the mezzanine level of the courthouse and in the law library and in the grand jury room on folding chairs, folding tables, laptops, that type of thing. And, uh, this has just exacerbated the problem of the space that we have. Now, we are more than happy to accommodate them, we do what we can. Uh, as y'all know, we work with the DA's office, we work with the public defenders, we work with the private lawyers in order to move our dockets and that's the most important thing we've got right there. We've gotta move our dockets. Uh, we take pride in moving these dockets. We have two-hundred-and-seventy days from indictment to resolution of the case. That means either dismissal of guilty plea or a trial, one or the other. And we take it seriously. We wanna make sure we move these dockets. We do not want a backlog. Now, that two-hundred-and-seventy day sometimes is, is moved for good cause based on crime labs and autopsies and that type of thing. But for the most part, all three of our circuit judges, and I know our county court judges are the same way, we move those things. Once again, we do not want to continue cases. But we're at a point now, and I can only speak for the circuit judges, I'll let Judge O'Neal speak for the county court judges, we're gonna have to start continuing criminal cases for the first time, because we can't try two at a time. Now, our dockets are running about seven-hundred criminal cases per year, okay? Uh, that's with the three, with the three circuit judges. Uh, and that includes anything from pre-trial to, uh, to, uh, guilty pleas, to trials, to, to any of that. Uh, we're also now having to have juvenile hearings over at the circuit courthouse, because anytime a juvenile is detained for more than forty-eight hours in the, uh, jail, we have to have a hearing to determine whether they stay in the adult jail. So, I, I just tell you this, and like I said, I'm doing this very quickly to try to stay under my limit and I bet I've already passed that limit. But we feel obligated to come to you today to at least tell you the problems that we're having. I think this is the first time, well, my second time in twelve years to appear before this board. Uh, so, we have not come over and asked for a lot, but we are in a situation of where we are in need of space, okay? Uh, how you do that, this is your, I know this is the board's responsibility, this is a board's decision. But this is the first time, I believe, that a judge has come over here formally and put it on the minutes that we've gotten to this point. Um, this is more of an aesthetic issue, but it also goes to the functionality too. Uh, we have, uh, broken whiskey bottles and beer cans and things sitting over there right now in the parking lot. And we have people coming in and out. When I was walking out, I told Judge Arthur, I said, "I purposely did not pick this up this morning and I've been picking them up on mornings." But I didn't do it this morning, because I just said, "I'm gonna see if these things get picked up." Yeah, wasn't picked up over the week, uh, last week, hadn't been picked up today. But that's, but it's an aesthetic thing that the general public has voiced his opinion to me when they come in for jury duty, that they have a problem with that. They don't like that and I understand that. Um, we've got beds and things and I've talked to Greg about this and he's been working on this and we really appreciate him that have weeds and that type of thing. We have jury rooms that have holes in the sheet rock walls, uh, haven't been painted, haven't been done, nothing's been done to them. Uh, we've got one jury room that's got a stain on the floor that's been there as long as I've been there for twelve years, so I don't know how long it's been there. But it's my understanding from the, from a prisoner that defecated on the floor that has never been taken care of. And we, and, and we have to explain this to juries. We also have a safety issue. As y'all know, we've had a shooting out there before. Somebody's been killed on the steps of the courthouse. Uh, we've had the DA's office, uh, people have been, uh, the investigators have been approached, uh, in a violent manner. Thank goodness they quashed that. Uh, we have been threatened, the judges have, but that goes, you know, it kinda goes with our job. Uh, we have a chancellor here, obviously, that has been threatened and y'all know about that. I'm sure you understand this. I, I, I don't, I feel like I'm preaching to you and I don't mean to, but at the same time, I just felt like this is the time to come to you, we all did, and put this on, uh, a formal notice to you that we have got to have some more space in order to do our job. All right? Thank you.
Hey, I have a statement.
Yeah.
So, thanks for coming and explaining all this and certainly I didn't know you had a stain on the floor and all those kinds of things, but can you put out, can you, can you put a list together, a priority list and send it to us so we can see it on paper? What do you need first? I mean, I-
Yeah, I, I can do that. Uh, let me say this, we have had this discussion and I know the ones of y'all that have been here the longest, we've had this discussion in the past. We've had architects and engineers we've met with on a reg-, oh, I say regular basis, two or three times. We've had plans drawn up for additions, for new buildings, that type of thing. Everything's been done, in my opinion, fairly informally, which is fine, but it always just kinda lays flat. So, we've done this before. We have said, "This is what we need, this is what we need." Nothing's ever happened, so I thought-
Well, I'm sure it's changed over the years, but I need a, I need a, I need a list of what you need in priority order.
I can, we can handle that. Thank you.
Um, Judge, uh, we got, uh, new county administrator here now.
We do.
Uh, Greg, if you can find those drawings, uh, and, uh, maybe look back over and, and get back with the judge. I think Judge, you, 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 you need to find that space in old buildings, in old design and kinda bring it to the board. And I think Sheila be able to see, then, the whole light. Uh, we might as well go ahead and use the term, uh, Madison County need a new courthouse. Big and better courthouse. Uh-
Derek, you know, we've got the old plans that were drawn up by the, uh, uh, you probably remember the architects and engineers, I can't remember the names now, but, uh, I do have, I still have a set of those old plans if you'd like a copy of that.
What year was that?
About what, four years ago?
I would say so, four or five years ago.
That's not too old.
No, it, it's, it's been, I think that's right. Time passes, I can't, I actually can't remember, but that's probably about right.
Judge, you, you and I have met on this-
Yes, sir.
Three times, three times. And, and I asked y'all to get together with JH and H-
Right.
And, and you did, y'all did. And it took a while for y'all to come to a conclusion, this is where and what we need. And, and where I left it, I thought, with, with you to be able to bring to the board was, guys, what do you need? And us look at phases. You know, four different phases.
Right.
Because you're looking at a new courthouse, probably thirty million dollars.
Yeah, I, I, I'll be-
Maybe forty. I don't, I don't know either. But the last time I left you, you was probably three years ago, two and a half years ago with the plans, that y'all look at the different types of phases. Phase one, two, and three and, and we can take a little bit at a time, you know, three to four, five million dollars and do different phases.
All right, I, Mr. Stain, I, I appreciate that and you and I have talked about that. I personally don't think that will work. Now, I'm not an architect, once again, y'all, please, don't, don't think that I am. But we're not looking at something that we say, "Well, we can do one courtroom here or we'll do half of a clerk's office here," anything. Every single court is in this situation. All three of us, the Chancery, the Circuit, the County Courts, we're all in the same boat. So, if we do one little thing at a time, it's not gonna solve the problem. It's just not. And this is something that came up ten years ago, that if, if we could've handled it ten years ago, and I'll take some blame for that, you know, but, but in all honesty, if we could've done this ten years ago, it would've probably been okay right now. My opinion, I don't think piecemeal in it is gonna do it, but that's just my opinion.
Well, I know five years ago, six years ago, the chancellor said they did not want to move.
Didn't wanna move, but that was-
Ronnie, is that not correct?
That was, that was in a different location, though.
I believe that was because of the particular location.
Yeah, yeah.
You're, you're right.
Yeah, yeah. You know, ideally, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, I've got my other two judges here, uh, and I, and, and our chancellor's, oh, I got my three judges here. And my chancellor, one of the chancellors is not here, I thought she would be here, but, uh, you know, ideally, if they all could be under the same roof, it's great. I don't know if that can happen, I just don't know. From a security standpoint, from the sheriff's department, I'm sure that would be a great thing. But, uh, like I said, and I wanna reiterate this, I can only tell you, and Sheila, uh, Ms. Jones, what you said, I, I totally understand. You just wanna see what we actually need. I can only tell you what we need. How to do it, that's, that's above my pay grade.
Yeah.
Uh- Thank you.
I, I would go in a little different direction than Gerald. We're going, I wanted you to bring something back, showing a building, uh, and how much it would cost. And Greg looking at it and showing how much, how many bonds or how much millage would we have to increase to build this facility.
Okay.
That, that's what I would like to see, because the citizens of Madison County need to see those numbers.
Yes, sir.
So, if this board decided to move that direction, they would know why we are moving that direction, because the need is there.
I understand.
Uh-
Tell me, Mr. Griffin, how do we do that, though? I mean, if we do that, I'm gonna have to go to the architects and engineers and, uh, are you saying that you want us to contact the ones that we had before?
Uh, uh, the one before, definitely, cause they should have something already. Uh, Greg, do you, you know who they are?
I do not know who did the former set of plans, if I remember correctly.
It's JH and H.
JH and H, okay.
And, and they have it already drawn.
They did, they had, they had one drawn, they had one drawn. Now, they had one drawn and, and we were, and Judge Arthur and I looked at them and we were, we were thinking, this was the same, Judge Arthur, correct me if I'm wrong, and this is the same group that, uh, uh, built the Chancery courthouse in Rankin County. And that courthouse, they had, it was less money than the one that they had here, where we had the land and no, not very little prep work and that type of thing. And we couldn't figure out how in the world this one costs more than that one, but, but once again, above my pay grade, I don't know. But, uh, uh, but I think that we can, if we can get with them again and talk to them and, and say, "This is what we need, this is what we don't need" and that type of thing, it'd be a great first step. And, and that's really why I'm here, is just to take that first step.
Greg, can you meet with the judge and JH and H and get a plan together?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause then we'll be able to look at it. We're looking at black and white, uh, we'll be able to show it here where all the citizens can see it. Uh, and then we have, be able to make a decision in an open boardroom.
Be glad to do it.
All right.
All right.
Judges, anything else?
Let me just say Judge Hanon would have been here. Uh, his brother passed away over the weekend and so he is in Grenada for our funeral today. Everything he said, ditto, I won't repeat it. There are some specific concerns for juveniles in the courthouse. Um, I'd love to have a room where our foster children don't have to be, wait in the general public area. I mean, I, you know, there's a, there's a list of needs and then there's a list of, of wants and wishes. If we're gonna build and have a big building project, I would like for us to do it right the first time, rather than to skimp by and, and do what we have to have and then still have a list of, "Well, this would be nice." So, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right and let's do it where it's gonna last us and take care of everybody, from the babies to the old folks. That's all, thanks.
All right, thank you, Judge.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Be sure you send us a list of your wants, then. I mean, if we don't know what they are, you're not gonna get them.
We, we got another judge coming here. She got the robe on, so we better let her talk if she chooses to.
I was in court listening to a case and somebody ran in the courtroom and said there was something about a cordial. I said, "Let me stop."
Prose my count, Your Honor, if you're gonna say anything.
Yes.
My wants? Oh, I need more than two minutes.
Ideally, on behalf of Madison County citizens, citizens and on behalf of the people who walk through this courthouse and through the courthouse across the street, you must consider, this cannot be kicked down the road again. We have to have room to try cases. Every one of the courtrooms upstairs has a proceeding going on it. Judge Clark, Judge Walker, and myself, we're all in the courtroom. When I have a visiting judge, they have to come down here, because that's how much business Madison County has coming through our court systems. This is not just blowing in the wind anymore. We have to do something. I love where I work, don't get me wrong. I appreciate everything that has been done to make this work, but it is exploding just like that is exploding now. Please, let us build. And I'm a taxpayer in Madison County. Let us consider and build a new courthouse. Thank you.
What, what would we do with the old courthouse?
This one over here? This one over here?
That would be our decision.
I mean, I could tell you things about parts of it that could be used, you know, but it has so many structural issues, that it would be hard for me, a layperson, to tell you what it could be used for.
Judge, I totally agree with-
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for letting me have a minute.
I need a list, I need to see it on paper, okay?
We can do that, I'll do that in my lunch hour.
I have to do it today.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you wanted it right now, okay, okay.
If I'm going to vote on it, I'm going to need a second.
I will take care of that, and I will work with my fellow judges. Thank you again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, thank you, Judge. Thank all of you all. All right, we're going to move right around to Madison County Waste Water Authority. That is Bernini.
Good morning, members of the board, that's a tough act to follow. My name is John Bernini, I'm here on behalf of the Madison County Waste Water Authority. And as, as you all know, the Waste Water Authority was here a couple of weeks ago and made a request that the county consider providing funding for improvements to the Beatty's Bluff wastewater treatment facility in Madison County, and the pipelines and pump stations that serve it. We're here to renew that request today, and as you know, we've, we have a couple of projects in mind that are eligible for funding under the American Rescue Plan Act and the Mississippi Municipal and County Water Improvements Projects, which means that each dollar that you would grant to the Waste Water Authority could be leveraged to obtain an additional matching dollar from the state. We're here in advance of what we see as future needs for Beatty's Bluff. We've, thankfully, and as the judges mentioned, and others have, have, and will tell you, Madison County's growing fast, and we're growing with residential developments, we're growing with commercial developments, and we're growing with industrial developments. And all those things put a stress and a strain on our infrastructure, including our courthouses and our wastewater treatment resources. We've described to you what those projects are, but we think they're a really good balance in addressing short-term needs and long-term needs, both residential and industrial needs. So, look, we've had a number of conversations, I've spoken with many of you, and I know others have too. We'd love to answer any questions you have. You know, our goal here is to be transparent and explain to you, you know, as best we can, why we think this is important, obviously. And we understand that your, the money that you have available from the American Rescue Plan is limited, we know that the pot is only so big. We do think that the Beatty's Bluff Treatment Facility in Madison County has, has the ability to, to serve the whole county, whether directly or indirectly, by providing for industrial growth, which provides for tax revenues in the county, and industrial growth, which provides jobs and, and other benefits to the county. As I mentioned, we're, we'd love to answer any questions you have. We know that you have tough decisions to make about how to allocate money. But we're here, again, to renew our request for ten million dollars, in the hopes that we could obtain a, a matching ten million dollars from the state of Mississippi. And if we're lucky enough to get that, we can pursue this first step in expanding the transportation and treatment capacity at Beatty's Bluff, and, which would set the stage for future expansion, so that we can continue to provide, you know, the types of infrastructure that, that will allow for growth and that our citizens expect and demand of Madison County. So with that, I've got Buddy Vocal and Laura Heisel here with me, they're probably a lot more knowledgeable than I am about the details of things. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain those, I know we have other folks here from the Madison County Business League and Foundation who may want to speak a word of support for Beatty's Bluff. So with that, I'll, I'll pause and accept any questions you may have.
All right. Anybody else want to speak? Yep, you see why we put that two minutes on there, because lawyers don't want to come up there talking.
I do, I don't know what to tell you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to take just a point of personal privilege and tell you, I appreciate y'all's vote earlier, and, and thank you for that opportunity to help serve Madison County, I really do appreciate it. We know that wastewater is one of the most important issues in Madison County, as y'all do, and, and we're here today to basically lend our support as we can and where we can to help address that issue if needed. We appreciate everything the Madison County Waste Water Authority is doing, we appreciate everything the Madison County Board of Supervisors is doing. We know there needs to be developed a plan, I think Michael has done that. There probably needs to be an education aspect of that for the public, and we're willing to help address that if, if they need our help, and we would like to do that. All we wanted to do is just come in here today, as we do with y'all every year, we try to identify issues that we think are priorities in Madison County, and we think that this is one of many issues that Madison County needs to address, and we just wanted to lend our support for that, and offer to help in any way we can. And I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman, one, one more thing that I'd like to add. At the end of this month, at the end of September, our ability to apply for matching funds from the state of Mississippi will expire, at least in this round of funding. And so I know that you have other people requesting infrastructure money from you, and I would submit to you that we're, we're prepared to make our application, we need your support in order to make it. But if we get your support, we're prepared to submit our application, meet that deadline, and be eligible for state funding, which would allow for a, a one-to-one match, or at least a potential for a one-to-one match of every dollar that, that you offer to support the Waste Water Authority with. So I think that's, you know, that may be a distinguishing factor between what we're here asking you for, and what others may have ideas about what they want to spend. We're prepared to move forward with our projects, and hopefully obtain as much state matching money as we can get. And to the extent you have others soliciting you for, for money in that respect, I would ask that you, you know, question them whether they're potentially eligible to meet those deadlines, and if they're not, you know, our, our position is that our request has its own merit, and we think it's important regardless of that matching money, but our eligibility for that matching money would allow you to leverage every dollar that you spend, and make it that much more impactful for Madison County and the Waste Water Authority. So I'll pause there, and again, answer any questions you may have.
All right.
And so you're ready to go now?
We're ready to go, we're ready to go, we have-
Motion that we support them in that endeavor?
We've requested ten million of your ARPA funding, we know that that's a significant ask, obviously.
How much do you need?
Pardon me?
How much do you need, not how much you want?
It's a, it's a, it's almost a twenty-two million dollar project. And we think if, you know, we've requested ten, I think we've also had discussions with supervisors about five million. You know, we, we have ideas about other projects that could be performed as well, and, and we know we have to take these in stages, and we've got time to do that now. But if we continue to wait, we'll be in a position where we may have to spend a lot more money in one swoop, and we're trying to be proactive and avoid that. So again, we've, we've asked for ten, we know that we've had discussions with several of, of the board members about five million as well, which would allow us to at least get started on our projects.
And so what, the consensus of the board members that you talked about five million, they were good with that?
Supervisor Jones, I've had conversations with a number of you, and, and I think almost all members of the board have expressed willingness to support the Waste Water Authority. I think the problem is that not everybody agrees on how to divide up the money. And you've got a number of people asking you guys for money, and I, and those are problems that, you know, it's the reason that, that you sit on this panel, and, and support your constituencies and make those decisions. I, I don't pretend to know what's best about which road gets paved first, or, you know, which, which projects can support areas of the county that are in desperate need most. But I know that we've got the ability to expand our wastewater system now, before we get into the kind of trouble that the City of Jackson has with its wastewater system. Now, their water system has gotten a lot of publicity lately. But the City of Jackson's wastewater treatment facility is under a consent decree from the Department of Justice and the Environmental Protection Agency, because they failed to make the improvements that they needed, that led to criminal inquiries, and it led to thousands of violations over years before the federal government finally came in and has forced Jackson to begin making improvements. We're not, we're not in any kind of a position like that. We've never had any amount of significant non-compliance at Beatty's Bluff. But we can forecast, and we're all smart enough to see the growth in Madison County, and we know that if we don't make these changes, if we don't make these improvements, it will restrict the industrial development of the county, which hurts the whole of Madison County. And so, maybe I've expanded longer on your question than I should have, but, again, our project is a twenty million dollar project approximately, we've requested ten, we understand that that's a major ask. We certainly would, would be very grateful for your support of five million dollars. And I'll, I'll stop there.
All right. There was a motion, and it wasn't a second, so motion died for lack of a second. And we thank you all for coming, and thank you for the work that y'all do.
Thank you, we appreciate you talking.
Move right along. Next, Dave Van.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, former presidents. Thought board members, thank you for letting me come before you today. Senate Bill 2100 requires me to come before you face-to-face at least once a year, so this is my twenty-fifth consecutive year to come before you. Want to thank you for all you do, not asking for anything today, just want to let you know that upfront, we appreciate all that you do. Mr. President, may I approach and give you these annual reports, and it'll summarize, oh, okay. Again, we're thankful to Madison County citizens for electing you guys to represent them, and we thank you, we thank you for the human beings that you are, and your support of Reginate, your allocations, of course, have an increase in over twenty years, and we're not asking for an increase, and we hadn't for over twenty years, but we appreciate what you do. We spent just under four million dollars on the campus here in Madison County over the last fiscal year, and, and your allocations goes towards serving those individuals that are indigent, underinsured, those that can't pay for services. We served over seventeen thousand people, unduplicated consumers in the five-county area, and, and, and without you guys, we could not do what we do. We're very appreciative of the Chancery Office, which is a big part of the lunacy commitment process, and they've been just wonderful and excellent, and we appreciate them, and, and also the chair, Mr. Espin, and all of your staff. And if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer those questions, but I'm very thankful for you guys, very, very thankful.
All right. Any questions, board members?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I think y'all is doing a great job in Madison County. So keep serving the citizens of Madison County, if you will. But I am wondering by appointee, Dr. Nelson, he, when my superintendent was on the board, he would be here with you, did, did you invite him?
The whole board knows, the whole board knows our schedule, including Dr. Cotton. We go to all five county board supervisors every year, and he, he knows.
He knows that you were going to be here?
Yeah, it was announced at our last board meeting, the entire schedule. Mr. Bishop, who is the personnel director, contacted all the county administrators in all five counties, and shared that information with all of our commissioners.
Okay, so maybe he had something he couldn't get away from. And once again, thank you here.
Thank you, supervisor.
All right.
Appreciate you guys.
Mr. President, I'd like to say that they work very well for Madison County, Mr. Pickett, as well, and I'd like for y'all to please acknowledge this report.
Motion by Trey.
Second.
Second, second by Carl, in discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Mr. Van has, has met us personally in the office, so we appreciate what they've done, and what they do for us.
All right.
Thank you for counting on us.
We'll be happy. Lisa, I better change that, it says you're happy, we'll be happy.
Okay.
All right, thanks here.
Yeah, thank you, sir, thank you, guys, appreciate you very much.
We're going to move down to our engineer, Tim Bryant.
Morning, Mr. President, board.
Morning.
First item I have is a kind of a continuation from last week, we asked for permission to subcontract with Fordice Construction with Clearpoint, or several entities last week, and we come before you today asking for permission for them to subcontract with Clearpoint Consultants.
Motion.
Second.
By Carl, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next item I have is a MOU between the county and Bear Creek. This is to relocate water lines in support of Bozeman Road Phase One. The majority of these water lines are in a private easement, which means that the county is responsible for the payment. So it's roughly a two-point-two million dollar project, we're paying roughly one-point-eight million, and Bear Creek is paying the remaining balance.
Tim, what's the, do you know when the bids will go out and construction will get started?
Bids have already gone out, from what I understand.
All right, when do you think construction will get started?
I would imagine soon, but like I said, this is in, in Bear Creek's, they're doing this, so I'll have to check with them to see when they plan on doing it.
Now, can you find out what the disruption, the traffic will be?
Yes, I can, hopefully it will be minimal, but I will find out and let you know.
Okay. Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Gerald, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Final item I have is the final plat of Woodscape Phase Four. This contains, it's fifty-five lots on fifteen-point-five-seven acres, and we do have the letter of credit for the final wearing surface.
Where is that?
That is off of Oakfield Boulevard.
Off of where?
Oakfield Boulevard off of Clarkdale.
All right, motion.
Second.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Scott?
Mr. President, board of supervisors, good morning to you. First item I have is a plat amendment, Charlton Place, Part Two. So a combination of lots thirty-five and thirty-six into one lot, Supervisor District Four.
Mr. Butler? Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Next item I have, a preliminary plat, green acre subdivision, for six lots, ranging from eleven to twelve-point-one-five acres, located on Sharon Road and Moss Road, Supervisor District Five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have.
All right, Attorney Mike Espie. All right, man, that means we not going to have a second session then.
That would be an untrue statement, I'm sorry.
All right, Greg.
Nothing for general session, I do have a couple of items for executive session.
There come, there come.
I promise it'll be brief, though.
All right, here come our comp trol in the side.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first three items I have for you are the budget amendments and the cash transfers, one general claims docket, and one payroll docket.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Item forty-three, planning and zoning, do I have a motion for approval? Got a motion, Mr. Banks, second.
Aye.
Second by Supervisor Jones, discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
The next item, number forty-four, is just approval of the clerk of the board for the month of August.
Okay. Have a motion, motion, Mr. Banks. Second. Second by Supervisor Baxter, discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
All right.
And the last item is the approval of the Fecor claim docket.
Motion by Trey, second by Carl.
Yep.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Yep.
Thank you, Nasa.
Nothing, Mr. President.
All right, aye, sheriff.
Three quick items, Mr. President, billing for MDOC for the months of May through July. For the month of May, twenty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars seventy-six cents. Month of June, sixteen thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars seventy-nine cents. Month of July, twenty-one thousand five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Motion.
Motion by Trey, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, next, OBS. All right, now we all entertain a-
Motion to close determination for the purpose of going into executive session.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Why are we doing this?